I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that the Williamsburg James City County School Board, where in closed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Serza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Serza, would you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
I'm here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agendas presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are none. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Before I move on to announcements, I just want to make sure the public knows they have an opportunity to speak before the board if to fill out a yellow speaker card. And to Ms. Serza, Dr. Heron, I'll pass it on to you for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will begin my report this evening with congratulations to a pair of students from Lafayette High School. Sophomores Jolynn Doty, I say Dougherty, you say Dotary, and Riley Vincent won honorable mention in the National Public Radio's inaugural Student Podcast Challenge. Their podcast, Why School is Harder, looked at how current high school students feel more pressure to excel compared to older generations. Jolynn and Riley conducted interviews and research to blend with their own experiences as high school student athletes. They completed the podcast challenge as part of the project-based learning innovation course Honors English 10 and Principles of Business and Marketing. NPR had over 6,000 podcasts submitted from schools in all 50 states and Washington DC, so this is quite an accomplishment for the Lafayette students. We've got a link to the podcast on the School Division website, wjccschools.org. Next this evening, I've got an update on last week's kindergarten registration kickoff. On Friday, May 3rd, we welcomed 482 future students to our nine elementary schools. The kindergarten registration event is always fun-filled as students meet teachers and visit classrooms. As a reminder to families, it's not too late to enroll your child in kindergarten for next school year. Children must be five years old on or before September 30th. Parents should bring a birth certificate, shot record, and proof of residency to their neighborhood school in order to sign their children up for school. More information is available on the School Division website, wjccschools.org. As you may know, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, a time for us to recognize our outstanding WJCC teachers and honor them for the lasting contributions they make to their students' lives and our community as a whole. Our teachers spend countless hours in and out of the classroom working with young people. They are mentors and coaches, club sponsors and counselors. They certainly don't do it for the money or for the fame. Teachers dedicate themselves to education because of a love of learning and passion for what is possible for each and every student. We are fortunate that the best and brightest in the field of education have chosen to teach in our schools. If you have not done so already, please take a few minutes to thank a teacher this week. Send a note, write an email. Let these hard-working, dedicated, and understanding professionals know that we respect and value their work and the positive impact they have on our community. I'd like to also say thank you to our school nurses this evening. Tomorrow is National Nurse, School Nurse Day. School nurses play a critical role in the health and wellness of our students. Beyond their supervision of the school clinic, these professionals promote wellness, healthy lifestyles, and disease prevention. They help ensure that we are in compliance with state and federal regulations and are among our first responders in an emergency situation. We are blessed to have a trained health professional in each of our buildings. As National Nurse Educator Renee Thompson once said, "Nurses are human by birth and heroes by choice." We want to thank those heroes in our schools for making that choice, and we are grateful for all you do. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Comments or updates from board members? Are we none? We will move on to citizens' comments. I believe we have one. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected, hence citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Andrew Archbald?
It is absolutely Teacher's Appreciation Week. Figured I'd support my red today. Good evening. Tonight I'd like to talk, continue to talk about teacher retention and what is required, considering that's what I've been doing at the last several board meetings. Bigger drivers related to the experience. Teachers want to feel like they're listened to, respected, and supported. We're really doing those things in this division. At the last meeting, Central Office talked about how there's a committee of teachers giving ideas. If you consider this listening to your teachers, I beg to differ. The committee is a few people, and the division is over 800 teachers. Those two things don't make sense. How is listening to a few the same as listening to over 800? Have you asked Central Office about that? I'm betting not. Teachers want to be supported. The support, for the most part, comes from building administration. In light of recent events, how can you be sure that building admin are supporting teachers? Do you even know what your building admin are doing? Do you even ask? I'll bet not. I've looked through the board docs and found the standard operating procedures adopted March of this year. In them, the second power is to gather information by visit or other means, the daily operation effectiveness of these schools. I'm sure you've not gone to the schools, so now I wonder, do you ask questions? Do you ask the new teachers how they're doing, or what they might need this first troubling year? Do you even know their names or their faces? These are the people you hire to teach your children. You should know who they are. Have you talked to new administrators? Have you made sure that they are getting the support they need from Central Office to run their buildings effectively and support their teachers? After all, that is the second power you have. Given the turnover in building administration, I'm guessing that, I'm guessing you have not asked these people these questions, such a simple thing to do to support them. A school board did, it is your job to make sure that these things are done. How can teachers feel supported with the rotating building administration that has come to occur in these buildings? How can these administrations be supported if Central Office or School Board are not walking through the buildings asking questions? How do you expect to keep these people if you don't care enough to ask them at their place how they're doing? And the people that lose out are not the staffers, but the people who are truly supposed to support and protect, the children. How are you supporting them if you can't even keep the teachers administration, the backbone of their success? So do your job, walk into schools, ask teachers and administration, "How are you doing? What do you need?" That way, our students, my daughter included, can have a shot at the best education. We attract excellent educators. Now let's hold on to them, because the only people that lose, if we fail, are the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker comments? Moving on to proposed agenda items. The first item, six point one, is the CDR lease.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Basically, the CDR lease, the Child Development Resources lease with us for the $900 billion of Lafayette High School, it comes up for renewal on an annual basis, and this is up for discussion this evening, and there are some changes to that lease as well as has been provided at board docs.
Open it up for discussion.
Want to take us through the changes in the lease?
Basically, the main change in the lease is that it would be renewed for two more years and would actually be, not be renewed after 2021. So it would be renewed for two years from August of this year, and then in May '21 would end the lease with CDR.
And the logic behind that is to line up with our capital plan?
That's correct. Our original approved, School Board approved, capital plan, the design for the transformation of the $900 billion into regular classrooms begins in '21.
So the actual construction begins in '21?
The design begins in '21. The construction wouldn't be until the following year. The money for the construction becomes available the next year.
Okay. But I think, I think ending the lease in, in May of '21, even if we extend it for another year after that, because we're just doing design work and not doing actual construction is fine, but it starts to set us up for a better, a better wheelhouse to start actual construction in the summer. So I think, I think that's a, I think that's a good change, and it gives, gives CDR plenty of time to look at an alternative configuration for the program or where they, where they want to keep the students.
Another change I should mention in the number one under term, the option for renewal has been taken out because it says it's not renewable after that. So I think the, this is given as a recommendation, but for board discussion tonight as to what that best date is for.
Why do we want to make it not renewable? Why wouldn't we want to have the option of extending it for another year, or, because if we, if we're not ready to do construction until May of, until June of '22, why would we want to have that resource empty and not available for CDR? Not have that option, I guess is my, my, why would we want to paint ourselves into that corner?
Certainly is an option to have it in or take it out.
Ms. Cook?
Well, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge that a representative from CDR is in the audience, Ms. Carla Javier, so thank you for being here tonight. And I want to comment that I think CDR is an incredibly wonderful organization that serves our community well and offers services to kids that allows them to, when they get to us, thrive. And so their services are invaluable to this community. I do support a date certain on this, and I think it makes sense to, to have that date certain aligned with our, our CIP. And even though I recognize that that may change, but my, my thinking is that in addition to aligning with our CIP, well, I guess first of all, with regard to Mr. Kelly's question about exiting the space only when, only when we begin construction, I would like to understand staff's, I mean, my understanding is that it would be better to have that space vacant during design, because you're going to need to get in there and, and spend time in that space, I'm assuming. So I, I don't know, I'm not an expert, you are, but I'd like to better understand why it's beneficial to have the space empty during the design work.
It doesn't have to be. Just from discussion and input from the Board, I put forward the suggestion of ending the lease in, in '21. It can be '22. It can be renewable, but based on some of the feedback that I've been given, I brought forward the recommendation. I don't think it, the design takes place of, of any building with redesign with people in it, so I don't think that is.
Hello? Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you're doing, the spaces don't have to be empty to do renovation design work. I mean, it doesn't, so for me, it doesn't line up with our capital plan, because if our capital plan doesn't, doesn't start construction until '22, not having it renewed after '21 is not aligned with our capital plan. Because even, even if they, you want access to the space, there are 16 hours a day where there's nobody in it, where you can get, so I just don't think that, make, having it not renewable three years before you begin in construction, and who knows what happens to those CIP numbers? They could be pushed out another year, but you've already locked it in that you're not going to renew it. I just don't understand why we want to lock ourselves in a corner like that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in addition to aligning with our CIP, and, and the idea of having a date certain is attractive to me, because this is a discussion that I think I've had every year. The other concern that I have about the, the space isn't just that we need to recapture the space and work on design and construct, and redesign that space. It also has to do with our, our focus on safety and our responsibility toward that has changed dramatically in the last, since I've been on this board. And so I am concerned about the fact that we have people inside our buildings that have an independent reporting structure, that don't report to our building leadership. And then I'm also concerned about if, in the event of emergency, that there are children in the building who can't, can't walk, you know, can't carry themselves out of the building. And I realize that the language of this lease addresses liability and insurance, but I'm curious, Dr. Heron, if we, because we ran this by our, our land use attorney, is that correct?
That's correct.
Could we run it by the attorneys that typically look at our policies, to look at it through that lens as well? I would appreciate that if that's possible, because I'd like to get their input on, on those, on those issues as well.
So I don't understand how it lines with our CIP if we're not doing construction for a year after it ends. Also, we have SROs that don't report to us that are in our buildings, and we have many special ed students that need assistance getting out. So I don't, I don't know how all that works. So, so I just, I just don't think that here in '19, that we should box ourselves in and say that it is not renewable. So, but we have to give them a year ahead, a year of warning that, that we're not going to renew it, I believe. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I guess I look at it from a completely different point of view. First of all, CDR has been a valuable asset to, to the School Division and for our students at Lafayette. But I think, to be fair to them also, it benefits them to know that the lease is ending, and that they have the opportunity, and they can go ahead and plan, and make a plan, and move on out, instead of plan, instead of depending upon us from year to year to extend the lease. I don't think that's really fair to them. I think it's better to have an absolute cutoff date, and then allow them, then they will know that they are leaving, and then they will have the opportunity to get set up in another place. That's the way I look at it. I don't like the way of just dragging them from year to year to year. I don't think that's fair.
Well, I don't think we're dragging them from year to year to year, because like, even when you rent an apartment, you can get out at the end of the year and do your own thing and not have to renew it. So they can, if they choose to move in September of, in, in May of '21, they can always do, choose to do that and not renew with us, and not ask us to renew it. So I just don't think that, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, you know, CDR has been, been a strong member of this community, does great work in this community, and to, and to line in the sand where we're going to force them to, you know, force them to go out a year ahead of time and leave space vacant that is otherwise could be used, used for the benefit of the community, I don't think is, is good practice.
I concur with Ms. Young in that I think a message has to be sent that we need to reclaim that space for our high school. And it is really our, our space to do with what we want for our high school students. And this is a, quite a long amount of time. It's a long amount of time that we have provided free space to CDR, a very long time, that hamstrings us to a certain extent, in that we can't even think about creative use of space because we have CDR. And yes, they are a wonderful organization, and no one thinks that they are not a wonderful organization. My duty as a school board representative is to think first and foremost of the, the school system, and not to hamstring the school system and its space. So that's my opinion.
Thank you.
One of the things that we need to remember, a lot of the very young children, sorry, that CDR helps and, and works with, end up coming to our schools. And they are, in some ways, the first line in helping those kids get ready to come into our public schools. I think the, the other thing is Lafayette is not bursting at the seams. It has space. And I agree with Mr. Kelly that I see no reason, you know, I've talked to some of my architectural friends, but I see no reason for that space to be vacant, that, that whole year. And, and it may very well be that they're, they're gone, you know, by the end of 2021. But I, I just don't see that being a real imposition or inconvenience to us if, if we provide the option of remaining one more year.
Dr. Beers?
I can see both sides of the argument, but I would say having that date is sometimes important, definitely in the planning process. And then having that, just to know, this is, I, I like it as it is.
So I guess my two, my two cents, having been an employee for CDR and, and know the value, as, as folks have echoed around at the table, it's an incredible resource, and it does certainly impact our students. Oftentimes, those little kiddos do become WJCC students, and so that is something that we can never discount. I, I think that we are in fact aligning it to our CIP, and I, I recognize that the CIP is fluid, and so it can change. It could goof, it could, things could move up, it could go back, we could have additional monies. I, I, the notion of being hamstrung is what comes to mind. We have in the CIP to begin design work, but, but that is fluid. I think having a, a, a line in the sand is, is important for planning purposes, because we have revisited this annually, and I think it does cause a certain amount of angst. And so if we just had an end date because we collectively are bursting at the seams, and it's, it's not this, it's not our job to determine how the space is used, that's administrative, and so we know collectively we need more space. So I guess at this point, just to kind of recap, it sounds like we kind of five of us are on the same page and two of us are not.
Yeah, I will not support renewal, the lease with the word "not" in there, not renewable. Think, I just think that hamstrings us, not CDR. So I just, I just don't like the, don't like that it's completely rock solid that we're going to leave space vacant for a year, maybe more if it gets pushed out, and say it's not renewable. So I just don't think that that's, that's prudent governance and prudent citizenship in the community. But that's just my fault. Obviously, I'm in the minority on that. And I don't understand how it hamstrings us. I don't understand how it keeps us from doing design work, having, having part of my day job, but I don't understand that. But I will, I will, I will not support the lease if it says not renewable.
By hamstrung, I mean it takes away flexibility from the administration. I would like our administration to have the freedom and the flexibility to, to know that after a certain date, that space is theirs to do whatever they want to with it. And so that's what I mean by hamstrung, in that we can't, they can't even go down that road when they've got this year-by-year renewal possibility. So that's, that's what I mean by hamstrung.
Dr. Beers?
I too believe that it's important to know what the administration's thinking is. So, Dr. Heron, I would like to know if we did allow one additional year, how would that negatively impact our, you know, what our goals are, the use of the space, our expansion of other high schools? Can, can you give us a?
Obviously, the, the design is planned for '21, and we won't have money at the earliest for construction until after May '22, you know. So Mr. Kelly's point is right, there could be a time when the, this, the building wouldn't be in use. I, I think, I think it's important for planning purposes for CDR to have a sense of when we absolutely will we absolutely will move into a design and reuse that building. I think that's important for their planning and so that we're not putting them in a difficult position with very little time to, to maneuver.
But in, in the grand scheme of things, you know, as we think about the, the vision and other elements of our CIP and, and are we going to be at a disadvantage if that option is left in there? Or, or simply say, you have until '22, but you can, you know, as, as most contracts are, if both parties agree, leave, to separate, they, they can do that.
I think the flexibility comes with the option for renewing to stay in there. That obviously gives flexibility. I think some members of the board obviously want to put a statement and say this is when the, the lease will run out, to, to be clear.
I want to know what you, what the administration thinks.
As soon as the building is, is available and as soon as funds are available, we will immediately reconstruct more classrooms at Lafayette High School. We won't have the resources to do that until the funds are available.
So I'm not sure that, that was the answer, but I, I, I think I appreciate the, you know, the position that you're in, but I do think that of all the high schools that need additional space, I, I'm just seeing Lafayette as number three, not number one. And, and I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time, like, like Mr. Kelly, I'm having a hard time understanding why the, you know, having that additional year is going to somehow put our, our CIP plans into disarray and, I, you know, I'm...
I think the most unpredictable piece of everything is enrollment, which is fairly static right now. We've one high school that's way over 100%.
Right.
If we had...
For a number of reasons.
If we had Lafayette space tomorrow, there would be an opportunity to use that space and take the pressure.
We have space there now, though, don't we?
We have some space, but we don't have all of the available space.
Right, I understand that, but we could...
And it all, it all would need redesign.
We could move some Jamestown kids to Lafayette and utilize that space. Of course, nobody wants to hear that, but...
There's many, many, many solutions to, to...
So, so I, I just, so I come back to what, what I, what I think is the, is the, you know, it may not be desirable for everybody, but I, I just, I'm trying to see how that suddenly makes us inflexible. I, I just can't, a year? We've, we've done a year stuff for many years, and, and it's not, I, I don't, you know, I just, I, I, I would like to see that change.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
Um, I guess I'm just going to say one thing. I mean, you're just, you're talking about if that classroom space is available, then perhaps it could be used by other students. Right now, the, the subject, I will not even say that terrible word, re, that starts with re and it has district and, and it. But with, without making our plans, without the school division making plans, that, that isn't, it won't even be on the table if there isn't space there. So are we really going to continue this year after year? I, I, I mean, I'm not that familiar with CDR. I, I know it's a great program, wonderful, thank you. But I think that we need a deadline, and then whatever else happens after that, whatever else falls into place, then, then at least that space is available.
Can I ask, I guess, another question of the administration? What would be the, you know, assuming we went ahead with retooling that space, what's the projected number of students that would serve?
I think there's going to be eight additional classrooms, about 200 more students ultimately.
Ms. Cook?
So, Mr. Kelly, so I won't support something that doesn't have a date certain. So that is, I feel strongly about that. I wonder, though, if you, what you meant to say was only if there's renewal in it, annual renewal, or whether it, two years is just too short for you? And we're just trying to find a compromise here, so...
Annual renewal, I mean...
So without annual renewal, you can't...
With, with the, so if, without the option to renew the lease, I will not approve it, because the, painting itself, like, I've said it all before, but painting ourselves in a corner when the funds for Lafayette, I will say redistricting, but the funds for Lafayette renovation may not come in '22, they might come in '23, '24, and so now we've left this space empty for three years when CDR could have made use of it. And so I, and so we, right now, our CPI says '21, we're going to do design work, so the space will be vacant for a year, and then we're going to start construction. But if that money gets pushed down a year, now it's vacant for two years. And so there's, if, if we, if we took the space over right now, we couldn't do anything with it because we don't have any capital funds to go change it. So I just don't see why we would say we would not have any possibility to renew it with the possibility that it will stay vacant for, we know it's going to stay vacant for a year, may stay vacant for longer than that, depending upon what happens to our CPI.
I think I just have a fairly high, based on the conversations that we've had in our joint meetings as of late, the last couple of years, and I have a, a very strong confidence in our relationship and communication with the funding body, so I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate changes. I, I think that once the county and the city adopt the CIP and then it comes back to us, I, I think we can count on that with a higher level of predictability than perhaps in the past, that, so...
Ms. Humble?
I also think knowing that we would have this space available in future CIP discussions, it would be this space that is available for eight classrooms. And as we're talking about the best use of our funding partners' money, it, it allows us to really look at, at the CIP and is the CIP, you know, can, can there be changes to the CIP that is beneficial to our funding partners? Knowing that we have eight, space for eight additional classrooms, that we could do something with that and redistricting and perhaps save some substantial money in the CIP down the road. So that, to me, is just another reason for not doing a year-by-year, letting this thing drag on indefinitely. If we know we've got the space, then it becomes a point of discussion in future CIP discussions.
So if I hear you correctly, what I think I hear you saying is it's difficult to say the funding bodies that we need space when we're lending the space to other agencies?
Yes, yes.
Oh, come on.
I mean, is that what you...
Yes, that is part of what I'm saying.
First of all, CDR space is not eight classrooms.
We would use that, we could...
It would be part of the eight classrooms, but it would not be eight classrooms. Not that big. It's not that big. It's not eight classrooms big. So I, I, I think, I think our, I think our funding partners understand what we're doing with CDR, and I think they also believe, I think, I think anybody, any reasonable person, well, let me phrase that. I think, I think if people note, look at what we're doing and that we're, we're providing space for, for a CDR year over year until the point that we need it, which is when, when we get our, get our design work and start our capital construction. And I think anything, anything before that is just not, just, just, I just don't think sending a message is the right message. I think working with our partners in the community is the right message, and I just don't think that we're doing that by leaving that space empty for at least a year, maybe longer. But, because every year, they've come back with changes to our capital plan, where they've rearranged projects and they've done things, and to say that they're not going to do that in the future because we're all holding hands, I don't think is reasonable. But I'm done.
Ms. Young?
I'm, I'm done, too. I, I mean, I, I think we're pretty divided on this. I don't know that we're going to be able to reach a compromise. Would be nice if we could, but sometimes we just can't, and I, I'm going to only support this if there's a deadline.
So, but I don't think we're evenly divided. So it, it seems to me like that, that five of us want a, a, a specific end time. Is that correct?
I think there actually would be a deadline. The deadline would be if you pick up this option, your final date will be June 30, 2022. That is, that is an end date.
So, Dr. Beers?
It would end a year, I'm sorry, it would end a year sooner if they don't pick up that option, and that would be 2021, June 30, I guess. I don't know, do we go, do we do the fiscal...
Let me clarify. So right now, the way the lease is written, it would end May 31, 2021, and I think five of us are supporting that. But if we bumped it to 2022, May 31, 2022, with no renewable option, would you support that? That's giving them additional year, which aligns with...
And, and, yeah, and...
...planned funding.
You know, they have the option of terminating the lease.
Earlier, they always do, yeah. They can, I think that's not the issue.
After the year, after that one year.
But I, I don't think that's so much the issue.
That's why I think the option, it has to be an option rather than, because they may find a place.
I don't think we would hold them to, I think the lease, if, if they found another place, we would not hold them, and it's...
Because we're not charging.
They're not, we're not charging, you're right. There's, there's no fee, they've been there for over 20, 20 years, so...
I've been there for 20. They're for 10.
Oh, no.
In the automotive space, they've been there for 10.
That is correct.
The current space that you're leasing to them...
They've been at Lafayette 20 years.
They, they came in in 2012...
The automotive space is 10 years.
To change that automotive space.
And before that, before that, they were in some of the other high schools, and they got pushed out of those high schools.
To your point, Dr. Beers, I, they, they could leave, we're, we're not going to require that they stay, so I don't think that's the issue. But I'm hearing that the majority of the board would like a time-specific end date. And so, Dr. Heron, I guess to give feedback and guidance to you, I think five of us are okay with what is presented, but it sounds like six of us might be okay if we bumped it out an additional year to align with when there's projected funding and not just design. So is, did I reflect that accurately?
I get support going out to '22.
With no...
With no renewal? Yeah, so...
Have until '22.
At the end of the day, I'll defer to administration, but there's, there's, it sounds like there's two...
You gotta tell her what you want.
There's two...
You can't do that now and split it for a board meeting, you gotta, I mean, this is, tell her that you want it with an end date of 2021. This, this, this is our work session, tell her what you want to read. You want to read 2021, tell her you want to read 2021.
I'm happy to compromise with, with Dr. Beers' suggestion.
Ms. Young?
I mean, I, can we, can we hold this off until, I mean, Ms. Cook has asked that this be looked at through the lens of a different, another attorney. Can we at least have the policy, the attorney that, that views this, have them look at that, and then can we further this discussion?
You can probably have that information before the next.
What was the, what was the context of your question? Not about the, not, not about the lease?
Yeah, having to do with, yeah, yeah, about liability and safety.
Well, so how many other board members could support a 2022 ending? How many other board members could support a 2022?
Right, correct. So that's what I was trying, yeah, so the straw poll, 2022, it sounds like I have six?
If the capital, if the capital plan doesn't change, but the capital plan might change. And so that's why I don't think having solid numbers, solid dates in there, without having the flexibility from our point of view and this community's point of view, I just don't understand what the driver is to put the date certain end date on it. So, so like I said, I mean, I'm with, if you put not, never, put an end date that's, that's solid, I'm one, I got it.
So it sounds like we have six if we move it to '22 with no renewal. Are there any additional comments or discussion? Are we prepared to?
Well, I mean, we can't plan on something we don't know, because we don't know what's going to happen to the CIP, but I think we need to plan on the current CIP and, and make our decision based on that, we, because we don't know what our funding partners are going to do. We, hopefully, they will, I mean, they have been very supportive, we've been very fortunate. But we can't continue second guessing this. I mean, that's basically...
We're not second guessing it, we just give them a lease for another year.
Yes, we are, we are second guessing, you are second guessing it, because we need to, I don't understand the reasoning, I mean, I do hear what you're saying, Mr. Kelly. You're, you're very astute, but I don't think it hurts CDR or, or the school division to have an end date.
If your capital plan changes, you've, you've locked into an end date.
And I'm all for that.
Any final thoughts? Dr. Heron?
I have direction.
Okay, so moving on to item 6.2, award contract for invitation for bid number 19-13993. This is the parking lot improvements at Matthew Whaley Elementary School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Falzone is here tonight to present the details of the CIP item. Welcome, Mr. Falzone.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron, thanks for having me out tonight. As Dr. Heron said, I'm Jim Falzone, and I'm the supervisor of capital projects and facilities for the schools. I'm here to talk about the parking lot improvements that we proposed for Matthew Whaley Elementary School. It was approved in the CIP for fiscal year 2019. The project went out, the IFB went out, was issued on April 17th this past month. We expect bids back on May 9th, just a couple of days from now. So this meeting, this agenda item is really for your information about the parking lot, and we'll be back on, on May 21st to, to you for vote. Are there any questions about this measure?
Yeah. Questions about this?
There'll be a picture coming to show us exactly what's being done.
When you should ask. I have one. This is an overlay and I'll speak in...
That's quick, I'm impressed.
In generalizations here, the, the photograph is an aerial shot of the existing condition. You can see the gravel parking lot at sort of the top there. I thought there was a gravel area toward the, up here toward the top. That's actually a, a BMP or the drainage system. Although that is the parking lot right there. This middle section in particular is really, really in bad shape. It's very, it's got a lot of potholes, and it's, it's also part of the, the exit, the exit plan for the drop off for the parents. And so there's a lot of parents that have to drive through there. If we get a little bit of rain or a little bit of snow, it's, it's dangerous. And so the plan contemplates then, on what you can barely see on the bottom there, that, that diagram, paving that gravel BMP area and the really poutled area of the parking lot, and then resurfacing pretty much the rest of the parking lot as a, as a base bid. Now, there are some areas around the ADA section, which is down here toward the school. And I did this.
Page up, page up.
Page up. All right, well, that's the end of the show. Any questions?
Yeah. End.
All right, well, anyway, so we'll wing it.
Now we're really in trouble.
That was a...
There are only three buttons, really.
Wrong one.
That's all good. Oh, there we go.
Oh, yeah, there we go, there we go. Thank you. The ADA parking spaces are closer to the, I'm going to press the right button, or closer to the street down here. Right now, there are currently 90 lined spots in the parking lot, including three that are for ADA. This plan here that we're proposing contemplates increasing that number to 108 spots. Because of that, we have to add a couple of additional ADA spots as well, so we'll be in compliance with the Virginia Construction Code. There is, there are rather, rather two additional ad alternates that we're contemplating with this IFB, and one is to, is to repave pretty much the whole rest of the restaurant, of the, of the parking lot. Hungry. That goes up past the ADA lanes. And then also another one to just resurface the playground that you see in the back there.
And could you, so I was at some, at Matthew Whaley a while ago, and they were showing me where the, the new trailer's going to go.
Oh, sure.
So the new trailer is going to go in between the...
Actually, oh, gosh. You gotta be kidding. Okay, actually, that's it right there.
Okay.
Right between the, so there's a little berm of gravel... Right between the, so there's a little berm of grass that's between the playground and the, and the parking lot. So it's adjacent to the other, you can see the other trailer, the existing trailer is right over here.
And, yeah.
Can you, can you show us with your laser beam, how parents, is it a laser beam, whatever it's called?
It is a laser beam.
Are you sure you want me to try this again?
Just don't touch a butt. Just don't touch a butt.
All right.
Can you show the way that parents, I mean, they drop off?
Oh, sure.
The route that they take to come in and-
Yeah, currently, they come in this way, and they go all the way around that way. And now the proposed one-
That was pretty squiggly.
That was hard to see. They had too much to drink last night.
They come up this way.
Okay.
Give me that.
Okay. And, and then-
I think I do.
This is a good thing for me. It's real anxious. Just gotta not touch it. Oh, I can, I can see how you do that. So they come in here, they go this way, they come around there.
You're much safer driving.
But you're saying, but you're saying they go over the BNP, right?
They do, yeah. So they go around the really poutled section over there.
Team dot.
Mr. Thorpe can-
Anybody want to take a stab at where it's going to go next? It's actually, it's just going to go, go to-
Laser and green, green arrow, green line.
Okay. Do they go like this?
No, no, no.
No.
Not to the second, second floor. Mr. Thorpe wants the green button on.
You said they drove over the BNP.
Mr. Kelly was right. Go ahead and say it.
That's the BNP.
That's the BNP.
Yes, that's the BNP.
We're reworking it though, so that-
He's putting, he's giving up on the laser.
I give up. So now if we're to come this way-
Right. Oh, okay. Yeah.
All right.
So less traffic going through.
It'll go like this.
Okay.
So, since that's, since that's part of your BNP, what's your storm manage, stormwater management plan?
Well, I mean, with a BNP, I've got to do a couple of things. You have to manage the quantity of water and the quality of the water, right? So what we've done is part of the drainage system is going to go under the newly paved area where the gravel is now. It's an oversized pipe, essentially, it just enters a weir under there, too, so it will restrict the amount of water that's allowed to come out of that parking lot at any given time during a rainstorm, a rain event.
If you, if you went with this plan, where would you start first? You know, there's a very active garden on the left side of that, that entrance through, I don't have the-
Daddy's garden.
Would you start in the back? Would you start in the front? You start the whole thing? What, what would be the sequence for that?
Well, and that, that's something that needs some pretty good coordination, because we're also replacing a chiller back there, and we're installing a trailer back there with two, two other contractors. And so, it's not for me to say yet, because we haven't, we haven't gotten our bids back yet and selected a contractor yet, but my inclination would be to say, let's probably start toward the beginning and get that knocked out, because I think that there's more work to do in the back.
And what's, what's, I probably should know that, but what's the time, what's the, what's the timeframe for this job?
Just the summer. We're going to finish it up.
You go before school starts.
That's right.
Okay. Good, that's right.
When does the trailer?
In July. So we've got time to fit it out with fire alarm and PA systems and everything in August.
And then just to Mr. Kelly's point about the BNP, we're not responsible for designing that. The contractor's going to design the BNP.
Well, the, the engineer already has designed it, so the contractor would simply just install it. In fact, you really can't see it, but it's on that little diagram, so you see some of the pipes in there.
You use the laser, yes.
I sure can, if you want me to.
Any additional questions, comments about the parking lot at Matthew Waley?
Can only try. Can't really do it.
Thank you, Mr. Falzone.
Thank you for your time.
Very much.
So moving on to item 6.3. This is career and technical education computer lab technology refresh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Paul is going to present this item tonight, but we're, we've got three different items coming one off, one after the other that are all to do with the technology refresh at the high school level. Mr. Paul?
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. As part of WJCC's overall division technology refresh, we've identified the need to replace 210 desktop computers in the CTE labs in all three high schools. Total cost is $115,000, $115,290, and this money was previously budgeted in the fiscal year 2019 CTE local budget as well as Perkins funds. The total cost includes 210 laptop computers, monitors, and extended warranties of four years. CTE teachers all had a voice in the selection of the specifications, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the purchase, and Mr. Landers is more than happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the actual technology.
Are there any questions for Mr. Paul?
So you were able to get a four-year extended warranty?
I'm assuming that Mr. Landers worked his magic in the last.
I'm impressed.
I personally did not get one. Use a laser pointer.
I'd love to use the laser pointer, but I forgot-
Please don't.
Yes, sir, we do have four-year extended warranty, actually, on all of our technology purchases approximately three years ago. We moved from a three-year to a four-year refresh cycle, and Lenovo has stepped up with four-year warranty.
That's great.
Additional questions or comments? I just wanted to make it clear for the public, this is at all three high schools.
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next one.
Moving right into our teacher laptop purchase, and Mr. Landers is going to tell us about that.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is asking for your consideration and approval of purchasing high school teacher-use laptops and the associated budget transfer as part of our refresh program. This purchase request will provide 300 teacher laptops for a total purchase price of $230,700. The purchase price does include the extended Lenovo services and will be made using a state contract with Lenovo.
Questions? Okay, hearing none. Moving on.
All right. Next item, also with our high school technology refresh program. This purchase request will, excuse me, provide 500 student lab desktops and monitors to be placed in media centers, photography labs, as well as general-use computer labs for a total purchase price of $249,500, and again, includes the extended Lenovo services and will be using the same state contract.
Okay, now I'll ask my question. So all three of these were, were doing this through Lenovo, from, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and currently, the, the contract we have with them is expiring. Is that the reason for replacing these?
No, ma'am, just, this is part of our standard ongoing refresh cycle. The contract is okay. It's actually a Virginia state contract as opposed to a local contract. We're replacing these simply because the existing technology has reached end of life. It's four years old, so it's time to refresh those items.
Stand, okay, and then I've added this episode for a total of all three of these programs, it's $594,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Our budget hasn't been approved yet.
It's all on that Commonwealth contract, right? So it's all the Commonwealth-
It is all with the Commonwealth.
Pre, pre-bargained, negotiated, that's a good word, pre-negotiated contract with the state for the, for providing computer.
Yes, they do have a base level pricing on all these devices. However, I will say that Lenovo is generally pretty good with us, and we actually beat state pricing, that we are using that contract.
Okay.
I guess I have a question about the future. Do you anticipate somewhere down the line that there is going to be more focus on laptops in the classroom and not quite as much need for these separate areas around schools? What you're thinking about that? Because I know, I know some, you know, in some school divisions there, you're sort of looking forward into where's technology going to go and how are we going to, are we going to, that's, have some thoughts on that?
Well, actually, we are just wrapping, wrapping up a high school working group where we've been meeting with, I believe, 18 different high school teachers as well as high school administrators, our ITRTs, a number of people have been part of this working group, and we've been discussing that very thing. Where do we take, particularly in this case, the high school technology, and what does that look like? And it is more of a classroom infusion of the technology of the laptops. I will say, our experience at the middle schools with the one-to-one program, there has been less of an emphasis on the labs, because they can take those devices with them and use them in the, in the same space. So I do see it-
And they're used to working with, you know, the middle schoolers are used to working with those, getting them anywhere they go, so I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so I see it being more student-centered, more classroom-infused.
Okay, thanks.
Here's additional comments or questions for Mr. Landers?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to information discussion items, 7.1, program evaluation. This is the IB program at James River.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're bringing to you tonight some information from Hanover Research, who's conducted a, an evaluation of our International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program, and Mr. Thorpe is going to introduce our guests, who will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. The International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program is offered to every student at James River Elementary School. The IB program for this level aims to help students develop the skills, knowledge, and attitudes they need to excel not only with their studies, but also with their personal growth. In our continued effort to measure the impact of existing programs and practices designed to meet the needs of WJCC students, Hanover Research has conducted a program evaluation of the Primary Years Program, IB program, as well as a stakeholder survey that has accompanied the program evaluation. Dr. Susan Groundwater and Mary Kate Taylor from Hanover Research will outline key findings and recommendations for consideration. And as we transition to Dr. Groundwater and Ms. Taylor, I wanted to inform you that you have a copy of the full program evaluation, report of the stakeholder survey, and a, and a copy of tonight's presentation slides at your workstation.
You gonna use the laser pointer? Yeah, you should be.
Hi, I'm Susan, everyone. I'm going to hear this.
In our direction.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for having us this evening. Mr. Thorpe set us up so well. I think we're going to just dive right in. We did two studies around the IB program. One was the evaluation of the program, and the other was a stakeholder perception survey. So we'll present very briefly the key findings of both of those studies, and then we'll share with you our recommendations based on those. Go right to the methodology, if you don't mind. Thank you. So our sample included IB participants, and these are the students who attended James River Elementary School, and so throughout our presentation, we will refer to those as the participants. And then our other group of eligible students were the non-participants, and these are the students that were enrolled at other elementary schools throughout Williamsburg. The participants and the eligible non-participants differed in several aspects. For example, the participants entering in grade K, on average, had significantly lower PALS, some scores, than your eligible non-participants at the other elementary schools. The two groups also differed demographically. So in order to find a more comparable control group for this study, we use propensity score matching. This is a technique that actually relies on a regression analysis to find very comparable participants from each group. So implementing this technique, as I mentioned, involves a logistical regression model that predicts whether a student who participated in the IB program using demographic characteristics such as, we looked at their gender, their ethnicity, their English language identification, whether or not they were in a special ed program. And so when we do that, we give each of the students a score, and then what we do is we match those scores, so we are as best that we can comparing apples to apples, if you will. Of course, there are limitations to this methodology. We're not looking at those things that you can't observe, that sometimes become very important, such as parental influence over a student or socioeconomic status. Those are the things that provide the limitation for this sort of methodology. So we found, we have a number of key findings that we'd like to share with you. Our first key finding is that when comparing the two groups, we found that the IB participants had higher attendance in sixth grade, and that was by about 2%. And then in grade seven, the IB participants were actually scoring about 17 points higher on the reading SOL. And in eighth grade, they were scoring about 15 points higher on the grade eight science Another significant finding was that overall, the IB participants had lower SOL scores than non-participants in grade three through five in math and reading, but the performance gap narrows by grade five. So if you look at that table, you'll notice that your James River students are in that, I'll call it, green color, and in the gray are your eligible non-participants. Again, these are the students that attended other elementary schools in the district. And if you take a moment to review as it goes from grade three to grade five, you can see that narrowing of the gap. Finally, we found that more IB students were identified below benchmark in kindergarten on the PALS Spring Assessment than all eligible non-participants, but this pattern actually reversed in grades one and two. And you can see it, it reversed pretty significantly. We are closing the achievement gap. We also conducted a survey. We ended up keeping 93 total participants that provided quality responses when we did our data cleaning. Almost twice as many staff members participated than parents, and we had actually one student who completed the survey, so that was really exciting to see that this, this student actually was engaged enough to, to win. I actually got a really sweet email from the student. It was like the nicest thing ever, saying, "Thank you for this survey and letting me participate in." It was just really, really, really sweet. So our key findings from the survey, when asked about the learner profile traits that are associated with an IB program, the respondents were in general agreement that these traits are being taught, and the students are learning important skills. Right at the top, you can see to be caring, to be knowledgeable, to be open-minded, to be an enquirer. So these are all the traits, and you can see they are all well above the 50% mark. Notably, over half of the respondents indicate that the IB program at James River, that these students are better able to communicate what they've learned, that they gain facts, ideas, and vocabulary more readily, they are able to formulate questions about what they want to know, and they are able to present in front of a, a group, or in front of their class as a whole. Generally, though, there is agreement that these IB participant students are better at self-management skills. When it came to the self-management skills, this was lower than the other skills. Fewer than half of the respondents agreed that the IB students are better at engaging in personal behavior that avoids placing others in danger, making informed decisions, and using their time effectively. Over two-fifths of the respondents indicate that the IB students are better prepared for middle school. Not only are they better prepared, but they're easy, they make the transition more easily than the non-participant students. And 53% of the respondents stated that the James River IB students are better than other students in terms of their discipline. Staff perceptions, however, were a little bit different when we compared their ideas to those of the parents. They felt that they less, they, the staff less frequently felt that the James River students performed better than other students. For example, you can see the difference between parents at 79% and staff at 46% when they were asked about those same things that we mentioned before. they were asked about those same things that we mentioned before, about gaining facts, ideas, and vocabulary. And other differences include it making judgments or decisions, and considering multiple points of view, or being able to take knowledge and ideas apart. And finally, while staff generally have a positive view of James River, their responses do not suggest that the program has a positive impact on instruction. Notably, only 39% indicated that improves the overall quality of instruction, helps teachers with formative performance levels, allows teachers flexibility in modifying plans to differentiate, and 24% gives them more say in decision-making at their school. So, when we put this all together, when we compared the two studies and looked at them holistically, we came up with a number of recommendations. First recommendations is that WJCC may promote the IB program to prospective families as a program that prepares students for middle school reading and science in particular. The analysis most definitively showed that the program participants outperformed similar students from other elementary schools in the district on the middle school SOL assessments in each of these content areas. Secondly, WJCC should further investigate the short-term effects of the IB, PYP, in closing or narrowing the achievement gap. The academic preparedness of the IB participants in the incoming classes appears to be lower. So, when they came into kindergarten, those PALS scores were much lower, but then by grades one and grades two, they had certainly closed that gap, and they were outperforming their peers. James River Elementary School's IB program should work to improve students' self-management skills. That was one of the areas that was rather low. While over one-third of the respondents indicate that James River Elementary students performed better than other students in this area, self-management falls slightly behind those other areas. And then, finally, we recommend that WJCC should work with the staff at James River Elementary School to determine ways that they can improve the program, that they can feel more involved in decision-making and in their instruction. And compared to parents, the staff indicated less satisfaction with its program and its impact on the students. Happy to try to answer any questions, if you have them. Cook?
I have a question about key finding five, or key findings five. Just, I know with the, when you were looking at student achievement data, you were able to compare it to, compare James River students to other students. But with staff perception, do we have a sense of, if you fielded a similar survey to other teachers in elementary school, might they also feel similarly unable to have flexibility? Just because the state of education today, sometimes that's an issue.
Yeah, for sure. I understand that.
So, I'm just curious if you have a sense of whether this would be similar in other schools?
Yeah, actually, the survey was open to all teachers to participate, and so, I do believe we had participation from other schools, not just James River.
Okay, do you know what that breakdown was?
I don't without looking at the data, but I am, that's really a great question, and I'm more than happy to look for those numbers and provide them for you.
Yeah, because if we could see a difference between James River schools and other schools, that might be helpful to understand.
Yeah, for sure. Mm-hmm. Dr. Beers?
Yes, actually, I have a few comments and questions. One of them is, I guess I was surprised that you didn't get additional, maybe you did, and we just haven't seen it yet, additional data from the parents and teachers and students from, from the other matched, from those matched pairs. The other thing, the other thing I'm concerned about is, it's a fairly costly program. And while differences narrow as they go up through the grades, I'm not convinced that it's due to the curriculum that's in place, but may very well be due to the quality of the instruction that those teachers give them.
Yeah, for sure.
And I guess the other thing, and you mentioned that, that with some of those early level, like PALS and some of those earlier tests, and I'll be perfectly honest, you're working in, moving into my particular area, so I, one of the things that I very much know about, you know, almost every readiness indicator, is by the second or third grade, the differences are minuscule, and as you pointed out, those kids are actually a little bit higher. So, in a sense, they do, they sort of catch up, and it may very well be a developmental aspect to it, and-
Absolutely, and that's a really great point, and that is exactly why one of our recommendations was to take a deeper dive specifically into that area, to understand why that gap is narrowing, because we all know that every school, district wants to see the achievement gap narrow, especially when you're talking about students that are coming from different demographic backgrounds, and you're talking about some of your subpopulations.
Well, the other thing about the IB program and James River, it also has students who come from very advantaged-
Yes, sure.
-homes and families. So, there is a mix there. Did you maintain that mix, or did you parse some of that out, or?
So, as-
Stay on the question I'm asking?
So, I think I understand what you're asking. So, when we did the propensity matching, did we look at similar demographics? Yes. And yes, we did. The socioeconomic, though, is one of those factors that we didn't have access to.
So, since you had, you were looking at children who had challenges in those early years, but not the students who were there from other, you know, other parts of the community, who are well-advantaged children, or that, or the other part of that is, if you matched those as well, is it possible that their performance and mask, or make it appear as if everybody is moving along nicely, when in fact, they may not be?
Well, I don't know that I have an answer to that without looking at additional data, to be perfectly honest with you.
Because I'd like to know, I think, because it is a costly program. And I know that, I've been to James River many times, talked to a lot of teachers down there. There is concern about the rigidity of the curriculum, the inability to modify, and what I don't, I'm not prepared to say that teachers in the other, other elementary schools are less or more restricted in, or constrained in what they're doing in there. That's why that whole thing about comparing, that's all part of, if you're going to compare kids from this school with kids from, you know, and you've matched them up-
We have.
So, I'm assuming that you've found a, you know, a student in one school that had highly educated parents, and you found another parent, or you didn't?
They didn't do that, no.
Okay, so I'm really, so I'm concerned about what the matching, what the matching was.
Okay, so, we looked at things like their gender, their ethnicity, their special education status, their English language learner status, those kinds of demographics. So, their SES is one of those unobservable factors-
Right, okay.
-that we couldn't include in the, in this particular analysis. That things like parent influence, the factors such as how educated the parents might have been, certainly is a more robust analysis. If we have access to that data, we could certainly do that.
Why, why, I guess I'm confused, I'm right with Dr. Beers on this one. I totally see what you're saying about looking at any of the results, if you don't have it broken out kind of by the SES in summers, then it is perhaps clouding some of the results. And I'm, I mean, with our redistricting issue, it is very clear, we can get the free and reduced lunch numbers, we can get, you can know just from the street addresses what the socioeconomic, you know, there's a lot of things that you can do, and I'm wondering why that was not done.
That was data that we didn't have.
And that's data that isn't, yes, if you could-
And I don't know that, Mr. Thorpe, can you address that a little bit better?
Hi, good evening again. And so, when we're talking about socioeconomic status, that's confidential information, and the data files that we shared with Hanover Research didn't include that information.
You, I understand that, and that you basically looked at a group of youngsters who had a number of challenges, and you tried to match them.
Or they didn't.
Or they didn't, okay.
Or they didn't. Not every child in the study that was used had challenges.
What would be the demographics of a child who didn't have challenges?
No special ed indicator, no English language learner status. We would have looked at, you know, female to female, Hispanic to Hispanic, that's the way that-
Basically, and I get it, I completely understand that, that you, the whole purpose of this was to see how students fare coming through that program academically, and how well are they prepared to go to school, and so, are you going to focus on those kids? I, you know, I completely, I just, I, 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 will be helpful, and that's a different study, is to hear from the teachers and the parents from those other, the other half of the matched pair.
Sure.
Just to see, you know, is that, is this an anomaly? Is this, can, you know, would I expect to see this everywhere, or?
So, you sound like you're very familiar with research, so then you will understand that, of course, you know, a robust study isn't just two single pieces like this. There are more components, you know, we would love to come in and do focus groups-
But the matched, but the matched pairs is, I completely agree with it, you know, with using that kind of approach, given the variability that you were, that you were, you know, in terms of the students that you're working at, so I-
Well, board members have a couple of comments and questions, but I wanted to defer to Dr. Heron for just a minute. The cost of the program is approximately-
It's about $175,000. That includes two salaries, IB coordinator and Spanish immersion teacher. Have I got that close to correct?
Uh, yes, it's $176,706.
Got it wrong.
Sorry.
Per year.
I'm just saying.
Per year.
Per year, that includes the fee for the recertification, includes professional development as well.
IB coordinator. And then, if I could just do one point of clarification, then I'm going to toss it to Ms. Young and Ms. Cook. So, just make sure that I understand this. So, at James River, we have approximately 70% of our students are receiving free reduced lunch, so that particular subgroup of economically disadvantaged children. So, this study cannot tell us directly if this particular methodology or program is academically impacting that subgroup of children.
I would say no, because we don't, didn't have access to those files. We could do that, if you were willing to provide that, it would be very simple for us to do that as an add-on.
Okay. And then, I'm going to toss it to Ms., thank you for that clarification.
Okay, I just, I just have a question about key findings. You pointed out that in grade seven, reading SOL test scores were 17 points higher. Did you also do grade seven science scores?
These, the findings that we presented here were the ones that were statistically significant.
So-
And you, I'm sorry?
Okay, so significantly, statistically significant, so that would be five points, right?
Or more, yeah.
Five or more points. So, so, grade seven science tests, I mean, the scores weren't significant enough to point out?
All right, may I jump in very quickly? Thanks.
Absolutely.
The science is not assessed in grade seven. It's grade five and eight.
Okay, and reading's not assessed in grade eight, is that right?
Reading is assessed in grade eight.
So, was, is that another one? Because it said that science scores were 15 points higher, but what about reading scores?
They weren't statistically, the findings weren't statistically. But, all of those breakdowns are, are they provided with the data supplement? Okay, so you don't have that? I apologize, you have the two studies. So, the data supplement that we also provided to Williamsburg has the complete breakdown of everything, not only those that are statistically significant that we presented here this evening, but it would have all of those numbers, and I'm happy to get those for you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for administration. I'm assuming that this study is part of a process that you're going through to evaluate all of our instructional programming and aligning it with a strategic plan. So, this is just part of a process that you're sharing with the board and the public that's informing your thinking as you are making budgetary recommendations next year and the year after, et cetera. Is that, is that fair?
That would certainly be part of the thinking. I think it would take a long time over several years to look at every single program that we have and evaluate it, but this has been here for a considerable length of time. I think one of the key things that stands out to me when I look at it is the, in the recommendations to investigate more what actually caused the change, the decrease of the gap in achievement, was it, can we attribute it to this program or to some of the other instructional methodology and focus in James River and all of our schools right now?
And that segues nicely to what I was going to ask next, but I just wanted to emphasize that this is really part of a process, so.
Absolutely.
And then, and I think evaluating this particular program is a real-
Your analysis.
Is a real challenge, because we don't have a, we don't have an identical school in an identical neighborhood that doesn't have this program. So, we're never going to really be able to say for certain that eighth-grade science SOL scores are higher because of this program. I mean, that's just not possible for us to definitively say that. And so, any kind of an analysis or evaluation of this program is always going to be a challenge to say that it does or does not work because of test scores. Yeah, yes.
And by the way, I'm not surprised at 79% of parents that they love that program to show up in middle school and high school.
They really love the program.
Why would that not surprise me?
Is that correct, Mr. Thorpe?
Ms. Cook, to be clear, there are many fantastic instructional practices that are happening at James River Elementary School, and to know that any narrowing of achievement gaps or longitudinal effects for grade eight science or grade six reading, that is directly attributed to just the IB program, we cannot tell that.
But we can't say it's not either.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear about that.
That would be a whole nother study, wouldn't it?
All right, so, yeah, so, you know, ideally, you want to look at everything longitudinally if you have the opportunity, and that just increases the likelihood that, what your findings are consistent from year to year, and then you can say with even more certainty-
Right.
-that what you're, you know, finding, we can make the correlation.
But I think, I think what that points out is, we want to be prudent in how much, how many resources we invest in evaluation when what we can determine from it is somewhat limited, so.
I think the other thing is that whether it's the curriculum, or whether it's the staff, clearly, staff and students and parents appreciate what's going on in that school. The students, you know, I feel more empowered, or that, you know, the teachers watching, you know, the growth of the students and the parents, so. And it's hard to say how much of that is the curriculum, and it's almost not what's of that is the curriculum, and it's almost not, what's important is to recognize the overall quality of the, of the activity down in that school. And I know there is considerable effort on the part of the school counselors, very much tapping into students in terms of having them feel more empowered, you know, as you know about learning in school, so I-
Dr. Beers, Ms. Hummel?
I had a question about the parents, the 30 parents in the study, the sample. Were they all parents from James River, or, oh, okay.
We're going to provide the data-
I wish they did.
That you will, you, probably more data than you're ever going to want to look at in your life, but that'll give you a break. And I will also note that with the staff, the staff were pretty evenly, all those staff responses weren't from James River, they were pretty evenly divided, we had, two middle schools were pretty evenly represented with the, with the James River staff.
And then, was there, like, with the, I've seen this with surveys, where the 30 parents, unique parents to a family, or could it possibly be a husband and a wife, so really 15 parent, you see what I mean?
Yes, I do. No, it would have been a household, it would have been represented.
Okay, so the 30 represents 30 households, okay. And then, I guess my only, I guess concern when I look at the key findings under four is kind of the difference between the parents, the parents' feeling of liking the program versus the staff's, the parents' opinions versus the staff's opinion, so.
Well, the good news is that your parents are very happy with the program.
Which, which means a lot, I mean, it does, it means a lot to that school, it, the school is, is a special school that people have a lot of pride because of the IB program, so it's just a matter of balancing that and the opportunity cost of 176, yeah.
You know, I think the other thing, saying some other studies, is parents, by and large, generally like the setting where their children are in a particular school. They may not like it nationally, but within the, you know, their, their own realm, in their own schools, with their own kids, they tend to have quite positive feelings about. And so I'm not, I'm not surprised to see that, that 79%. I'd like, one of the other one, that's 20, I think it was 27%, who didn't think it was that great, I would love to know who those, who those parents are.
So, you know, you always come away, get the questions, right, following studies like this, and there's like always more that you want to know, I think that's, that's natural, and, you know, especially with a survey, you know, I think you have to remember that a survey is going to give you a broad brush, right?
That's why it keeps college professors busy for years and years and years.
Excellent, yes. It does indeed.
They work the same data any number of different ways.
I will have to say, all of our, all of our data is custom, so we're not reworking anything, so, but I, I know where you're coming from, for sure.
I have just a couple of follow-up questions. So with regard to the two middle schools that were pretty evenly divided, I can assume they were the middle schools that, that were receiving, the two middle schools that receive James River students?
They were, I'm looking around for names, I know James Blair was one of them.
This is James Blair and Berkeley Middle School.
Okay, thank you.
And then you mentioned, you mentioned the one student, so we served, we had the qualitative survey of parents and faculty, and one student responded, was that an accent, or did we intent, did we open it up to students?
Students were allowed to, yes, participating.
Okay, so we did open it up to students, but just one responded. And then, Mr. Thorpe, if you could share with us, over, over time, how, how, how did the numbers look with regard to students who opt in to go, like, outside of the James River?
Sure, I've got, I've got the past five-year trend, sorry, I've got a lot of papers, I imagine if we had given you the data supplement. So in 2014, 2015, there were 51 students who opted into the program. 2015, 2016, there were 44 students who opted in. 2016, 2017, that number was 31 students. In 2017, 2018, that was 36 students, and this year, 21 students.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Any additional comments, questions? Thank you for, thank you for having me. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Okay, moving on to item 7.2, the Tuano Middle School Uniform Focus Group Summary.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This evening, I'm going to present to you some information from Tuano Middle School about their uniform policy and the process they've gone through over the last year to review that, and Dr. Worley's going to start with a quick introduction, then hand over to the principal, Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Herr and members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Tracy Jones, principal at Tuano Middle School. She has led an extensive focus group to assess the current uniform practice at Tuano. Her attention to detail and thoughtful consideration of all stakeholder groups is most appreciated. We also want to thank Ms. Eileen Cox, Senior Director of Communications Engagement, for her support and collaboration with this work. Ms. Jones has reviewed extensive qualitative and quantitative data with families, students, and staff. Focus groups work together to compile the data and make recommendations for the future of uniforms at Tuano. I appreciate the extra time she put in as she navigated this topic in her community, and I invite her to share this information with you now.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Herr, and it's my pleasure to be here this evening with you to share, as Dr. Worley said, the work that we did this school year in looking at the uniform policy. I hope to get this thing right, let's see, hold on, okay. So I'm going to begin by saying a little bit about the history of how this practice started at Tuano, for those of you who may not know, just a brief recap. And looking at the archived data that we have in our building, there are three binders, and I've combed through them over the year, trying to figure out how this all came to be. So during the school year of 2000 and 2001, about 55 teachers, staff members, and parents forged ahead with the idea of having uniforms at Tuano Middle School. Things that they quoted in their information as to the why, at the time, it involved things like promoting school climate, looking at a cohesive school community, and also promoting school safety, and overall fostering academic achievement was what they documented as some of the reasons of going ahead. So during that school year, those parents and faculty members, they worked tirelessly in looking at data, research, they even visited schools, middle schools in Hampton and Newport News, to try to get an idea of what this would be like if they put it in place at Tuano. Survey data from that school year in the spring of 2001 was conducted, and using that data, they approached the school board about having this mandatory palette year, the following school year, which would have been the school year of 2001 and 2002. In your folders, I've given you some handouts, and on page one of the handout section of that, you will see a board agenda item from August of 2001 that was included in the information. And what this agenda item was asking and reporting to the school board at the time was, in order to institute it for the mandatory year with fidelity, they thought it was necessary to have all students in the building in uniform, because it was a new concept, so that it could go through with full fidelity. So what they asked of the board was to allow students that did not want to be a part of that palette, mandatory palette year, to be opted out and be allowed to go to out-of-zone schools. The agenda item you see there on page one, the principal at the time reported that in August, there were no parents that had taken them up on opting out and going to an out-of-zone school. So from what I can tell from the information that I read in these binders, and you're more than welcome to read through them, it's interesting looking at pieces of paper from 2001 and how they look so different, and, you know, it was interesting to go through. So in learning that information, they forged ahead to the next school year, fully implemented with the uniform practices at Tuano. So it's a little bit of the background information. So what was a uniform, just kind of getting you an idea of what, what the students were wearing. Basically, they wore khakis, like you see the student in the photograph here. Khaki bottoms, could be skirts, shorts, things, anything on the bottom could be of khaki. Also, they were allowed to wear blue, they called it tweed, or twill, actually, twill is what it was called. I call it blue khaki, they're the same pants, but they're blue. And the other thing they were allowed to wear when they first started were very specific polo colors, such as true red, hunter green, and so forth. They were even talking about specific color of socks, they were, had to be white. So over the years, it has transformed to include any polo shirt of any solid color, sock color doesn't matter now, and just, it's kind of grown and evolved a little bit over time. So in the school year 2017 and 18, the opt-out policy of having, or having students not be able to be at Tuano became a little questionable because of increased enrollment. So when students or a family approached about opting the student out in the 1718 school year, due to enrollment, the student was allowed to stay in the building and opt out. So next thing in your handouts, I believe there you will see, coming up shortly, we're not quite there yet, you don't have this slide in there, but you do have it in the PowerPoint presentation. During the 1718 school year, the first year that we allowed students to stay in the building and opt out, 29% of our students opted out. And with this data in hand, we decided that we, this school, we had to go forth and do some kind of review, look at, you know, what's the whys, and how are people feeling now, that is a number of years later. So in your handouts, as I was referring to earlier, I believe it's page two, the data that you see there on page two goes along with this information that currently, in the second year of opting out and staying in the building, students are, 49% officially opted out. In your handout, on page two, as I referred to, you will see a graph, I believe, that shows you the number of percentages of why students opted out this school year. On the slide in front of you, I kind of listed those things from the most reasons given to the least. So for instance, too expensive was the number one reason that parents and families cited, to least amount of reasons why it was only schooling, not fair. So there's a graph that breaks it down a little more detailed in your handouts, as I said, on page two. So the next part of our, beginning the review process of this, looking at the practices, we did a survey. Surveys are, you know, one way to kind of get a broad view of what stakeholders are thinking. So parents, students, and staff in October 2018, which is the last past school year, was able to be a part of that survey. Phase two, if you want to call it in phases, November of 2018, we did our first part of our focus group, and then in February, we did the second part, was in 2019. So also in your handouts, you see the full survey results, I believe it starts on page three through five for you, and it's broken down by each of those stakeholder groups, starting with parents, staff members, and then going to students. On the slide here, just to kind of give you an overview of the bottom-line question, there were nine questions, or items, on this Likerskill survey, and the bottom-line question was, should Tuano Middle School continue to require students to wear a uniform? So this is the one piece of data, I'm going to pause a little bit and kind of review, because it's the bottom-line question. As you can see here, parents strongly disagreed by 21%, and the other end of the spectrum, 35% strongly agreed that we should. Students, as you can see, were on the, strongly on the disagreement side of this, at 75%. With a few of our students actually, you know, liking and wanting to continue at 30%. Staff members, with the bottom-line question, you see that 10% disagreed with continuing, where there was a 42.5% of them that would like to strongly agree with continuing of the uniform policies or practices, excuse me, at Tuano Middle School. The 10th item on the survey that we had, we tried to keep it right around 10, was an open-ended question, giving respondents a chance to put down comments, allowing them to speak freely and just have a chance to just, I guess, give their ideas about what they thought about the whole situation. So instead of giving all of those, I read through them and provided you with some themes that were there for the adult side of this, adults being, once again, the staff and the parents. As you can see there, I will read them off to you, it says, should be no middle ground, it should be all or nothing, to ease inconvenience, said some of the adults, you know, early morning school, getting up, it was easy to pick out clothing, even down to the expense of having two wardrobes. On the student's side of the comment portion of the survey that they had, here's some of the themes from the student's side. You'll see for them, self-expression and creativity, they're uncomfortable, unfair, we're the only middle school, only school in WCC that has uniforms, expense, even down to some students, I really don't mind, it's easy to pick my clothes, so those were some of the comments that kind of resonated through both the adult side and the student's side. So taking these results, we forged ahead with our focus group in, like I said before, in November, the following month, and this data of the survey was presented to them as one of the first things on our agenda. So we had stakeholder groups of this focus group of students, parents, and once again, also staff, and it was the same to represent those that took the actual survey. The first meeting that we had, it was very important to share with them the purpose and why they were gathered together. We had about, it wasn't as large as the 55 back in the original start of this, that year that they spent at Tuano, figuring out why, why they want to do this. We had about 25 participants, nine parents, eight students, and about eight staff members were part of it. So the purpose was to talk about the current practices at our school, discuss the benefits and challenges, and also eventually offering some kind of recommendation as what they thought the next step should be. So in November, the process included getting into like groups, and the groups were given three essential questions that they had to, we wanted them to discuss, debate, and just kind of sit around and talk about, you know, what, what, how these questions and what impact that the uniforms were having at Tuano. The questions here included, why is important to you, what about it is important, what are some of the positive aspects of the uniform practices, and what are some problems that you see? We, they recorded, and I typed them up for you, they're in your handout, I believe it starts on page six, going through page nine. Each group has had a facilitator from our staff that was a neutral person, sort of as a recorder to guide through, guide the conversations through, to be ensured that, you know, we stayed on task and focused on the reason we were there, and just to keep order, and we went over norms in our groups and things of that nature. So, give you a chance to skim over that, but there is a summary sheet that I guess you see there on page 10. What we did, once the like groups had gone through and answered the three essential questions, I allowed, and we allowed, a gallery walk so that students could see what parents said, and vice versa, and so forth, and kind of get an idea and read through, you know, what each group had to say about the questions. We came back together, and on page 10 of your handouts, I will pause for a moment to let you skim. We looked through and found similarities through, between the three groups, differences, and then the final question was about, what else should we consider, what have we not thought about? So if you look at the handouts on page 10, I'll just skim through some of these to, that catches my eye here. In terms of similarities between groups, inconsistencies of, you know, who's in uniform, who's not, and how to enforce that, with some of the similar responses, professionalism, they felt that students in uniform across the three groups presented a very professional demeanor when in uniform. Increase in unity, school spirit, is the one at the bottom, and there are several others that you will see there. Some of the differences that we noted in our big reflection or collaborative group, you will see students, for instance, has no expression, they compared it as feeling like they were in jail, was a direct quote. Parents and teachers both, a difference was that uniforms placed more focus on learning instead of how students looked. Teachers said it was easier to enforce when there was a dress code in place. Just to regress a little bit, we in our school began to manage two dress codes, who's not in uniform, who is in uniform, and teachers became very focused on trying to look at the list of students, who's- who's supposed to be not in uniform, who is, and it became very hard to regulate it. So that was another reason to forge ahead and try to figure out where we stood in this. So with academic focus is what we needed to be. We needed to make sure we look at the process as clearly as we possibly could to ensure that we were keeping our focus where it needed to be versus teachers trying to figure out, you know, this person's supposed to be in uniform and this person's supposed to not be in uniform. So to continue a little bit with page 10. Parents are concerned, one of the couple items down there from the bottom. Parents are concerned with students having to keep up with multiple sets of clothing. Staff, one less thing, so it was easy to identify students. What they meant by that and talking to them, like on field trips and things that we would go outside of the building, was easy to, you know, know who the kids were, it presented a very cohesive look for our school and representation of our school. At the bottom, I mentioned to you, we considered a question of what else should we look at? What else haven't we talked about that you would like to say? Just that final out the door kind of question, what do you want to say? Some of the things mentioned, the policy should be modernized. A belt review, we require a belt. And one of the things that came up, we do to have to wear a belt, in the long and tuck in their shirts. That was another question that came up. Another thing at the bottom is that students said at the time that they felt like they were looked at differently by other middle schools because they were the only ones, the students looked at them differently. So that concluded our November process. Like I said, the three essential questions, looking at similarities and differences in thought. And then they had homework. School, we give homework. So their homework was to think about takeaways. What did you get from this? They had a graphic order, now it was given to each of the participants. They had to kind of, a moment to reflect. What did you get out of this session, you know, and they had to write it down, personalize it. And the second part of their homework, for lack of a better word, was to do research. And in your handouts on page 11, I provided with them three jumping off places, if you will, to kind of get, you know, them moving in the direction of looking at research. They were not exclusive to these items. I felt with students in the group, six, seven, eighth graders, we had to give some kind of guidance to lead them, you know, to get them started. So research, and the last thing they had to do for coming to the next session, which was in February, was to sit down and draft and personalize what they were recommend. So now you had, you sat and talked with others, you listened to other stakeholders, you've done research. Now what would you recommend as we move forth and kind of personalize that? So coming back in February, which was a few months thereafter, we began by first reviewing what we did in November because with the holidays and all setting in, we had to kind of refresh what did we do the first time, revisit, you know, that conversation. We did get into like groups again, and their task was to discuss research. They had to look at their takeaways and kind of refresh their memory and then talk about what research they had done. Once again, each group was facilitated by one of our staff members that was a neutral party to do the recording and just to guide the conversation. And in that like group, they had to develop a collective recommendation. So they were instructed to, you know, you have written your own, like personalize what would you do. Now that you've heard from others in your group, let's consider how we're going to move forth and give a collective recommendation. And they had to come back prepared to present that recommendation to everyone. So that was the process for February. So to wrap it all up, we came back as one whole group. All three groups recommended, and you will see the typed versions of the recommendations as they were presented on page 12 of your handout. They all recommended that they would like to continue with the uniform dress code practices at Tuano. However, there's however here, the stipulations, the opt-out, it was a situation for us. Like I said earlier, trying to manage two dress codes just didn't work. So if that has to remain, they would not like to continue. The other part of it, the stipulation was they wanted to modernize it, update it. Some revisions should be done to the current practices that we have there. For instance, the belt, as I mentioned earlier, the tucking of the shirt. Kids, you know, wanted to have more dress down days, so they had lots of ideas about how to make it better and bring it to 2019, 2020 standards in their mind. So with that said, if an opt-out component remains, which is a part of policy for WTC, Tuano Middle School will not like to continue with uniforms because like I said earlier, the opt-out really made it very difficult for us to now build in to keep the focus where it belonged. And of course, that's on learning and academics. And so that concludes everything I would like to say, and I'm ready for questions.
Questions, feedback? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I appreciate your being here and the process that you went through. I'd like to echo Dr. Worley's thanks of that and acknowledgement of it. I also wanted to just thank you for your communication of, to your stakeholders that this was coming, that the policy related to uniforms was coming through the school board tonight and making sure that the people in the Tuano community had an opportunity to weigh in should they so choose with the school board. So I appreciate that. You talked a lot about 2001 and all those fabulous binders. I'm curious, between then and now, was there ever a revisiting of this process between then and now?
The binders that I looked at were all focused on when they were starting. I have been at Tuano since 2011 and not since my time there, I have not been a part of that. So documented, I would say no, has not been.
So regularly revisiting this as a school community, it has not been part of kind of the regular workflow?
That is correct.
And then about the focus on the opt-out, that it's not ideal if you have, is, was that based on our current policy, you can't opt out at the school? Or the old policy where if you opt out, you had to go to another school? Was that ever discussed, the difference there?
Which data point are you asking about again?
So it used to be if you opted out, you went to a different middle school?
Yes.
Okay. So the discussion of, we want a uniform, but only if you can't opt out. Was the discussion about not opting out at all, or if you opted out, you should go to another school?
So you're talking about the 2017, 18 school year?
No, I'm talking, so it used to be our policy allowed you to go to another school.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, our current policy would not accommodate that. I'm just curious if the conversation was about not opting out within the school, or if you talked about?
At that time. You mean at the time of 2000?
So like if now, if you had a policy and wanted to opt out and you, would they be okay if you had an opt-out? If you could go to another school?
Yes, that was discussed in our focus group. And if it could be that way, they would really like to continue with the policy at our school and have students opt out and have a different option other than opting out and staying in the building.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
So people were comfortable with the idea of opting out, meaning going to another school?
Yes. That is correct.
Helpful, thank you, sorry, I was not articulate in asking that question.
I have early mornings and it's a late night, so I'm like, putting my words in place, she's saying, got it.
Ms. Hama? So Ms. Cook and I were, we serve on the policy committee. So we had a lot of these discussions going on, and I also want to say thank you so much for this process. And this kind of question is for Dr. Heron because i- is it? I mean, I think we moved away from the opt-out to another school because we didn't have any space to put anyone. But now that we've opened up James Blair, is opting out at another school even? Is it feasible? Can we go back to that policy from an administrative standpoint?
We certainly could go back, but from the data, it seems like 50, 40% of the students are opting out by not wearing a uniform right now.
No, but that's because, I'm assuming, that's, the policy is that they don't have to go to another school, so they can just opt out. But if we had a policy that was the way it was before, where if you opt out, you need to go to another school?
We couldn't accommodate 40% of Tuano's students in other schools if they chose to opt out. The numbers are very different from the one or two that we would have had in previous years. So we'd end up with a very small Tuano when everybody else overcrowded.
And so now I'm turning it to you. Do you think that if given the choice between you can opt out, but you need to leave this school, do you think it would still be 40-some percent, 49%? Or do you think the school would go back to the way it was?
I think it would be less, but I don't know if it'd go exactly back to the way it was. Part of that is sort of like when you ring the bell, you can't unring the bell. You know, the option is kind of presented to parents and families that this is a possibility. I know in talking to some parents, some of the frustration was they didn't want to fight the battle at home either. You know, we were fighting the battle at school, so when other students saw, oh, she's not wearing, they go home and I don't want to wear it. So I think it would be less, but I don't know to say it'll go exactly back to the way it was before. I don't know that, but I agree that it would be less.
So in August, this agenda item here from August of 2001, it said no students had requested to leave Tuano Middle School.
That is correct.
So, so did we really have an opt-out program where people took advantage of it and went to another school? I was asking her?
Yes. In the data that you see there, in that particular, going into the mandatory palette year, no. There were none that took it up. During my time at Tuano, that's as much as I can speak on. During my time as an assistant principal there, I know there was one student. I don't recall his name, it was a male student that went to Hornsby Middle School. So I don't remember the year, but in my tenure and time at Tuano, there was one request, and that was a student that went to Hornsby.
But it wasn't a lot of kids that went then, it was just the, just that one that you, in the last eight years that you've been at Tuano?
Yes, that was a one student, a family did request.
Now, our current policy doesn't say that you can go to a different school, it just says you can opt out.
Exactly.
And do we have the same, James River also has uniforms, doesn't it?
That's correct.
And do they have the same issues, concerns?
Not that I'm aware of, but Mr. Thorpe's going to speak to it.
I also have an opinion about that. I'm willing to, part of it, you know, and I will certainly let you give the James River side of it. When you, middle school, and I can't speak, I've been in middle school my whole life, it's middle school. I've been a middle school teacher, middle school principal, and that's sort of where my life has been. So he'll bring definitely the elementary perspective. But with middle school students, a lot of peer pressure, it's a lot of seeing. And maybe a kindergartner, a first grade, well, you're going to wear the uniform, they do it because the parents say they're going to do it. Like I said earlier, one of the things that parents began to share with me is that I can't fight this at home anymore, you know. So I think it's age-related, and I don't know, and maybe not, there's no research behind that, Stephen, it's just me and like I said, my opinion, which I decided to give since I'm standing here and I can give one. That's my opinion, but no.
And we want to hear your opinion, but before Mr. Thorpe jumps in there, sit back. So your first year, you had 29, the second year, you had 40-some odd, and the third year is next year. So, so your trend, your trend line right now is not in a pro-uniform mode.
That is correct.
And, and the number of parents that you've had engaged in this is a lot different than it was in 2001, where you had 55 parents of smaller schools conceivably than you had now. You didn't have 55 parents of what's a larger school.
It was a combination of staff members, I don't know exactly of the 55, how many were parents? I could go through and find, but there was a combination of the adults that were.
Right, and so it's really kind of hard to, hard to draw conclusions from that.
That is exactly true. Also, looking at the survey data from then, there, when they first started, which I did look through that as well, the students were 60-some percent, no, we don't want this. And at the time, parents were about 78% that we want to move ahead. So with those percentages, even though the students were saying no, parents were saying yes, they came.
It's middle school.
Yeah, so, so yes.
We'll let Scott come up now.
Yes, okay.
Really quick, there are 10 students who opted out of the uniform program at James River Elementary School this year.
Out of the entire population?
That is correct.
Wow, they wear belts too?
I can get that information for you, Mr. Kelly.
Additional comments?
I can just share anecdotally, when my son was at Tuano in '06 and '07, there were approximately a handful of students who opted out of the building to go to a different middle school. But just wanted to point out too, when this was originally started in '01, we didn't have MTSS. And so part of, part of the reason for creating this was to build that school climate and culture. And, and we now have other ways to do that. So like, can you speak to what, how, what MTSS has done at Tuano in terms of climate?
In terms of MTSS, we do a lot of things to promote unity within the building, promote positive behavior. I can give you specific examples of things we've done in the building, even from tier one to tier two, even working on tier three interventions with students. So I think MTS has done a lot to bring our building together. We've worked at grade levels to do different activities, to inform parents about what we're doing with MTSS. I think that has been a big part of our moving forward in discipline, overall climate of our building, because it does create that, a sense of cohesiveness. I'm not answering fully, but it has been a positive impact. And the kids may say differently, if I haven't surveyed them on that topic, but from my vantage point, I see the benefits.
Thank you.
I mean, probably the one thing that, as I've been reading through this and listening to you, I think it really should, I mean, because I empathize with those students, but I think it either has to be all or nothing, one or the other, because it's too confusing for, I mean, and you're spending a lot of inordinate time enforcing dress codes, dress codes instead of a dress code.
That's correct.
And I'm going to ask you a very specific question, and you don't have to answer. How do you, as the principal, feel about this?
Wow, all eyes just turned over here, like all, all at the same time, wow, you all practiced that? Well, part of, like I said, I've been this since 2011, and I came from a previous middle school in WACC. Coming in, it was really good to see students, it did have the cohesive feeling. You know, we've gotten compliments about our student body, you know, how well represented they are. I think it, and there's no data, I'm just once again giving my opinion, because I'm standing here and you're listening to. I think it has, it did impact discipline in terms, when you feel like your uniform, for lack of a better word, it tends to make students, not make, but enhances discipline in terms of positive promoting it. And to let you know that the students in this group that we had, in the beginning, they knew the data, what the students had said. It's 75%, the students in that meeting said, we've noticed that there's a change in our building. So that was from the words of the students that were involved. So, but looking at data, I think my opinion of the cohesiveness and going back to MTSS, there have been leaps and bounds in our building, and that's, that's all I know is uniform. And until recently, I just know now, the problem is we can't do what we're doing now and juggle too. But data states what parents want, and it's really split. So my opinion is split on that, but I think we have to listen to what our stakeholders are saying. And if we want to pursue dive deeper and getting more, like going, 55 people were involved, we had 26. So I just want academics to be the focus in our building. I want students to learn, I want teachers to be able to teach and not have to focus on what students are wearing. So whichever way that goes, like I said, when I came in, it was very presentable. I was like, wow, this is really neat, this is different. So I would lean to what data says and what our stakeholders want. And I guess that's the answer I'm giving and hope that's.
That was a good dance.
Political one, probably, but yes.
So the school rang the, rang the bell, and now can't unring the bell? As far as the opt-out, look to stay in the school?
I won't say you can't, but it's more, what, what I believe is that in 2001 and 2002 going into it, people were more open to it and like, oh, well, we have to go to a different school if we, if we stay here, it's mandatory. Now that there, there's a feel that you've sort of tasted this, that, well, we can stay here and opt out. Going back to the question over, that I was asked over here, I don't know if it'd be less. You know, I think it would not be 49%. I think it may be a little resistance for, you know, from some of our stakeholders, knowing that, you know, we've had a chance to do this. In 2001 and two, there was really, there was a choice, but the choice that was made by people going into it was that we want to do this. Now that we might not have to do this, it may not be able to.
So my second question, I don't know if I can answer it, will the lawyers allow a public school not to have an opt-out policy?
The board can certainly have an opt-out policy, but you will definitely end up, could end up with a lawsuit as a result of it.
If we have a no opt-out policy, that they have to?
Correct, because you can't force students to wear a uniform or?
You can't turn them away at the schoolhouse door, right?
Correct.
There actually, there is some research.
So the lawyer recommends to, to protect ourselves.
That's the next agenda item.
Correct.
See, I'm way ahead. See, I'm way ahead of you.
Yeah, you are, always.
No, I mean, historically, and, and, and you're absolutely right, you go back to 2000, even, even way back before then, there was generally greater acceptance for, for uniforms in public and private schools. And over the years, they've, they've been, um, they've been relaxed, and they, and, um, there, they, and more options have been created for the students so that they, you know, that, that rigid, everybody wears khaki pants or, you know, whatever it might be. So, um, and I, and I do think, um, we can't force students to do it, and, but, but on the other hand, students who want to do it, because they like, you know, they like the way they feel, they like the, you know, fine, um, but that, you know, I don't think that should, um, preclude other students from, from not doing it, so I guess I'm, you know, wear whatever you want to wear.
Ms. Cox?
So I understand that the horse is out of the barn, that-
Yes, that's why I'm in about that bell, yes.
Right. Um, but if students who chose to opt out had to attend another school and provide their own transportation, which parents obviously would have to be involved in, because that's what our policy-
There you go.
Do you think it would, I know you, I heard you say that it would drop, do you think it would drop a lot?
Um, from 49%, I think it would drop a lot, but I don't know what that percentage would be, because parents work and they, um, have to get to, and it's not always convenient to drive their students to and from school. Um, so I, I, I think it would drop, I don't know about how much, um, but a part of also, um, you know, the resistance from that, I don't know what our community, um, you know, how the feeling would be with that all, if that be the case. Um, so yes, I believe it would drop, but I don't know by how much.
Okay, thank you, sorry to put you on the spot.
I can predict, maybe, but it wouldn't be, you know, just me in my opinion again, which, you know, I've given a few of them here, but I can't.
Thank you.
Don't be shy now.
Well, I think, I think, I think the other thing though, too, is the other thing that's going on with middle school students is they're getting ready to go on to high school.
Yes.
And there are no uniforms at the high schools, and there's just as much spirit, there's just as much, um, pride in, uh, you know, being an eagle or being a ram or whatever it might be. Um, so I, I just, um, my feeling is I don't feel that, I guess I don't feel that strongly about it. It's, it's, if kids want to wear khakis, uh, and a blue shirt, and a tie, and a blue blazer, which maybe, I know, I know. I had to do that for years. It, it's fine, I mean, it sort of becomes your uniform, you can't help it, you can sort of put it on, but, um, um, and, and I, I, I think that's fine, you know? Little kid, you know, a middle schooler wants to wear a tie, do it. But I think that, I think the dress code is far more important than the school uniform.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Additional comments?
Um, I just want to say thank you so much for the background on that, because that's a question I get a lot, so I appreciate you putting that out there for us.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Dr. Heron?
And if I could just say a big thank you, you've put a lot of time and energy into this whole process, your research, they, working with families, students, everyone else, and tonight, because you've got an early start in the morning, so thank you very much, Ms. Jones, appreciate it.
And sorry about earlier, I'm, I'm not understanding your question, I had to wake up.
We're good.
Thank you.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
And now, Madam Chair, I believe we're moving into the policy discussion about school uniforms.
We are, so the first agenda item is-
And Dr. Worley will be-
Eight point one, so school uniforms.
Good evening, once again, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, members of the board, I am here to review policy JICA on school uniforms. So the policy was adopted on April 3rd, 2001, reviewed again on January 8th of 2002. After our view in, in April, May this year, we did, um, we did not recommend any changes to the policy. There is no corresponding VSB policy for school uniforms. This policy has been reviewed by a policy committee and our school board attorney. We did also get input from stakeholders, and you heard a lot of that input tonight. Um, we were also, I was also able to participate in some of the focus groups and listen to our stakeholders. Um, we did have a discussion about taking the opt-out out of the policy, and after discussion and council member attorney, we decided to recommend leaving the opt-out clause in. The council advised us to keep in mind the implications of First Amendment rights. The policy is in line with guidelines for the wearing of school uniforms in public schools, which was adopted by the VDOE in May of 1996. So that's our summary of the policy committee work on this.
Dr. Worley?
Yeah.
Does the policy committee want, would like to weigh in on this or additional?
I just, I think that Ms. Hummel and I concur with the, the opinion of staff and the attorney to keep the opt-out, uh, in, um, and, um, right, so.
Which I'm assuming would mean-
Keeping the opt-out in?
Yes, that, keeping the opt-out in, which is the way legally we feel like we have to go.
Absolutely.
Which would then lead to what at Tuano?
The recommendation from Tuano would be if the opt-out is left in, to move away from school uniforms. And, and currently, policy JC, which is the school attendance area, if, that governs, out-of-zone requests, uh, an opt-out wouldn't be, I don't, if I understand correctly, would not be an acceptable reason to-
To, to opt out and relocate to another school.
Right, so, yeah, so if we wanted to consider that, we'd have to go revisit that policy, just to, I think, correct, yes?
Yes.
That, yes. And so I, so the policy committee reps would really like the rest of the board's opinion.
I don't see how we can't leave the opt-in, opt, opt-out policy in.
Young?
I, I mean, constitutionally, I think you have to have the opt-out in it, because as Dr. Worley pointed out, it's First Amendment, but, I mean, I, I have a, a strong feeling, and I've seen it in work, that schools that have uniforms, there's a lot of very positive outcomes from wearing uniforms, and it's, it's unfortunate that, um, that you can't, that that can't be identified when they're in this situation. I don't envy the principal's position at all, so.
Dr. Beers?
I think I've expressed my view, I, I just do not feel that strongly about uniforms, and if they want to have a policy that has that, that clearly students have the right to, um, not follow it.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do think that if they, if this goes the way that you're stating, is that they really need to get a very strong dress code policy. We do, but I think-
Yeah, with this division-wide dress code.
Yeah.
I think, um, I, I don't think this belongs in the policy, but just as a matter of practice, I think that the idea of regularly, um, well, it sounds like this policy's going to go away, so what I'm saying is move, but certainly maybe at James River, just regularly revisiting this policy as a part of, as, in a cyclical basis, just so that you can kind of stay ahead of it and get a sense of school climate and community around the issue, which just seems like that would make sense, so you're not reactive.
Young?
I mean, the only other thing that, when I think of the benefit, one of the benefits, and since bullying is such a huge issue, especially in the middle schools, that is a great, uniforms are a great equalizer. And one of the things I noticed that was pointed out was that kids don't keep them clean, well, that can happen with any clothing, I mean, having taught school myself, I know, but anyway, I don't, there's much more to be said from my part.
Ms. Taylor?
I mean, it looks like legally, we need to keep the opt-out provisions in there, but, um, as someone who wore uniforms myself, um, all throughout school, um, I enjoyed them, um, not having to, to go through the closet and pick out what, what you're going to wear, so that's a little bit unfortunate, but.
If I, if I had my choice, all middle schools would have uniforms, that's just me, because I, I love uniforms. I do think they make you, that they make, um, students, especially at the middle school level, uh, act more professional, and they're more serious about school, it's an equalizer. But that said, we are a public school, and, um, we need to be, I guess, you know, not I guess, I know, we have to be, um, supportive of the law, so.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement, I, I'm in agreement that we must keep opt-out in, and I do recognize, as, as folks have said, there, there are benefits of uniforms, but I've always felt like, having been the parent who experienced it, um, with one of my children, it's either, it should be all or nothing, it not, it should not, we should not just pick two schools in the division, so I personally always took issue with that, it was going to, it was going to be middle school and it should be all middle schools, but it sounds like it won't be any middle schools. I know, I know there were some middle schoolers today who were very worried because they were looking at the agenda, other middle schools, so, um-
That's interesting.
It was, yes, rumor on the street.
So maybe, should start a rumor that all middle schools will be wearing-
Oh, no, no.
I didn't finish the statement.
Ms. Cox was not, yeah, no.
Thank you, Dr. Worley.
Okay, uh, so moving on to the next policy, um, eight point two, revised policy IHA grouping for instruction, Mr. Thorpe?
Good evening again, uh, the purpose for this agenda item is to bring a policy revision, IHA grouping for instruction for your consideration. Uh, in WJCC, this policy was adopted in the year 1974 and was last reviewed in 2001. The proposed revision would bring this policy in line with its associated VSB policy. Our attorney has reviewed this proposed policy revision, and it has gone through a policy committee. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Um, does the policy committee want to first before?
Yeah, I just wanted, Mr. Thorpe, if at all possible, if you can look at line number 16, item number three, uh, given that we've asked for a new elementary school in our CIP, I was wondering if you could comment on the, um, the intersection between grouping for instruction and our current space that's available in elementary schools?
It's a challenge, it's a real challenge, uh, 98.1%, that's our school capacity in our elementary schools right now, and in order to meet the needs of, of every child, to help him or her be successful, we're using every corner, every classroom, oftentimes moving into the hallway to do that, uh, it's, it's a real challenge.
A new school would change that?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Feedback?
Questions for Mr. Thorpe?
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Moving on to eight point three, revised policy KG, community use of school facilities.
Ms. Cox?
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron, uh, tonight we bring before you proposed revisions to policy KG, use of school facilities. The first thing that you'll notice is there's a lot of red on these documents, and I'd like to just explain why that is. In our existing policy, much of the regulation is captured in policy rather than regulation, uh, and the reg, current regulation has guidelines for, uh, folks who are renting, uh, such as don't tape things on the wall, that's not really a regulation, that's, that's just good use of our buildings. So, um, we've taken the policy, pared it down to be more in line with VSB policy, and moved the items that are more regulatory, as appropriate to the regulation. Uh, so this policy was first adopted in 1979 and revised again in 2008. Um, it's been reviewed by the policy review committee and school board attorney. Uh, there were two questions that came up at the policy review committee that I was asked to look into, so I'll just share that with you now. Uh, the first was on, beginning on line 24 through the end of line 26, the superintendent shall report actions taken under this policy to the school board at the end of each month. In consultation with the school board attorney, they recommend that language be kept in. This information is already presented to you as part of your monthly financial reports, um, that you receive, and they said this is truly an accountability measure, just to make sure that if we ever had a question about how the fees were being collected or used, that it's, there's record that we document that. Uh, the second item is down on line, well, all lines, 27 through 31, and particularly there was a question about the reference to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts of America, and why we singled out those particular organizations. Um, and in consultation with VSB, uh, they recommend that that language be left in, in consideration that in 2016, uh, state code was amended to say that we must provide access to patriotic youth organizations, specifically, uh, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and their recommendation is that although you all may be intimately familiar with the Code of Virginia, folks that are interested in renting our facilities, uh, may not, and so this is, uh, they recommend that that language stay in there for public knowledge.
So do we know all the patriotic societies?
So patriotic youth organizations-
Under federal law?
Uh, I do now.
And how do you get on that list?
So, so the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts received a congressional charter, um, and that led them to be designated as a patriotic youth organization. Congress no longer, um, uh-
Does that?
Yes. Identifies, uh, through charter of organizations, so again, that's why, why they are in here.
So give me an example of another one.
4H.
Uh, uh, actually, no, the, uh, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Sons of the American Revolution, um, Congressional Medal of Honor Society.
The Daughters of the Confederacy?
I don't know about that. I want to belong. Can't even say that word anymore.
So, so is keeping in there designated as patriotic societies by federal law appropriate, that they don't, the feds don't do that anymore?
Well, they're still recognized as part of federal law, they just don't grant new charters, they stopped granting new charters, uh, about 30 years ago.
The things you learn at work.
Yeah, I tell you. Have the Boy Scouts changed their name so that we should have changed?
So they can actually distribute literature in the schools?
Correct, mhm.
There are no other groups that can do that?
No, there are, uh, it says that if you are going to provide that to any charitable organization, you must, you must permit it for the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. It doesn't preclude you from distributing on behalf of other charitable organizations that work in partnership with the schools, it just means that if you offer that to one, you must offer it to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts.
Because, I mean, we do get requests to distribute literature that we decline, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's right, okay, just, but, so I, I've just, not, it's not totally clear in my mind what constitutes-
So in general, we distribute materials for, uh, for organizations that are charitable or education-oriented, that are a partner, or if there is a, a cosponsored event between the organization and the division, or if it's an agency of one of the municipalities, so for example, Parks and Rec.
Here's Ms. Taylor.
Okay, to move away from that, um, lines 21 into 22, I think it should read, will not impair the efficiency of or interfere with the educational program.
Yes, yes ma'am, thank you. You're so good at that.
Um, additional comments? Okay, thank you so much.
Was there another policy in there that was on that line? That there, was there two red lines, KGR?
KGR is the regulation that's presented just for information.
All the things that migrated over.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so moving on to item eight point four, revised, recode and rename policy KI, public sales and solicitation in the schools to KGA, sales and solicitations in the schools, Ms. Cox?
I have the pleasure of presenting this policy as well. The first recommendation is to recode the policy and rename from policy KI to align with the VSB corresponding policy, that is KGA. Uh, this policy was first adopted in 1974, and, and I don't believe has been revised since, so it's probably about time for that. It's been reviewed by the, uh, by the attorney and by the policy review committee. Uh, there is one error that I would like to point out to you, um, as we discuss the policy. Uh, on line 20, uh, it says organizations or extracurricular activities, that was misplaced, or extracurricular activities should actually be at the end of line 16, so that it would read, no one may sell or offer for sale within schools, on school grounds, or at school-sponsored activities, any product or service, except when the sale will benefit the educational program of the school or extracurricular activity.
Sounds, yes. Still at cost to us with her.
Feedback?
Yeah, Ms. Cox, because this was last, well, it was created in- Yeah, Ms. Cox, because this was last, well, it was created in 1974, could you, just for the benefit of the public and anyone who might be interested, could you just explain functionally just the slight difference this will make?
Sure. So this says that you can still have, you can still sell things to benefit charitable organizations, or you may collect dues for professional organizations, where previously it was kind of an open door. This says that it has to happen outside of instructional hours. So, so some of the organizations that are supported through school events and school activities, they just will be doing that before and after school, rather than during lunchtime. And it also, one difference that you'll, you will see here is that it no longer names a specific charitable organization, such as, in this case, it was the United Way, because there are so many, as Dr. Beers mentioned, so many organizations that the schools partner with individually, that this was giving them, you know, it was listed in policy where others were not.
And so will this impact like PTSA or PTA dues?
No, those, again, those are things that are supporting the educational programs and extra-school, extracurricular activities. A better example might be the Relay for Life, or if you are selling donuts for anything else, oh, I'm sorry, not donuts, pardon me.
Candy.
If you are selling nutritionally guideline-approved snacks, then those would have to be, to benefit an organization, then that would happen before or after school.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to say the D-word.
Ms. Young, did you have a comment?
I just, I mean, this, this last line, individual discussions between school division employees during school hours are not prohibited. I assume that's relative to the charitable United Way and things like that.
And also professional organizations. So for example, if you are a member of a professional organization and had a question about your dues, you could ask your representative one-on-one within your building.
During, during school hours? Okay, thank you. Any additional comments? Feedback? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cox. Okay, moving on to action items, 9.1, personnel action items. Is there a motion to approve item 9.1?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as presented.
Second. Thank you. Was there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 9.2, the MOU with WJCC Schools Foundation, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve of the revised memorandum of understanding between WJCC Schools Foundation and WJCC School Board.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 9.3, change start of May 21, 2018 to, oh, well, that's.
That wasn't on the agenda.
Sorry, hello?
That was approved.
Sorry, I printed off the wrong one. Moving on to 10. Oh, well, okay. Late. 10.1, board member comments. Sorry. I'll start with Ms. Taylor. Board member comments?
On April 24th, I had the opportunity to attend the Teacher of the Year ceremony with many of my colleagues, and it was a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the many accomplishments of our teachers. My favorite part is always the films that they show, and that's on the website, so check it out if you have some time. It's, it's always a great time, and I highly suggest it. And as was mentioned earlier, today's Teacher Appreciation Day, and it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so please let educators in your life know how much you care about them. Thank you. Cook?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the administration for its wonderful work on Teacher of the Year. I'm sorry I wasn't able to stay for the entire event, but it's always a wonderful one. Speaking of wonderful events, I had the pleasure of seeing Mamma Mia at Warhail High School. It was really good, and it is, the whole soundtrack is just, just on repeat inside my head ever since. So it was really good. I also wanted to reflect on Dr. Heron's remarks earlier during her announcements, appreciating nurses. And I, I just want to express my appreciation for this community's commitment to having a nurse in every school. That, and I know that's near and dear to Ms. Hummel's heart, but that is not something that every school division does, and I think it just has an incredibly positive impact on our students, and it's really an important investment that we make in them. So, so that's really a good thing. And then I also wanted to say that I'm excited this Friday to go visit Blatton Elementary School. I think it'll be the, you know, 10th or 12th visit that I will have made this year as we close out the year. I might be able to get one more visit in, but I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues. We all visit schools frequently. We do it double digits every year, year over year, and so we have a good opportunity to tour the school with the administration and, and see instruction, and teachers, and cafeterias, and all face-to-face. So anyway, just wanted to say I'm excited about that.
Young?
Okay, first of all, I would again thank the teachers for all that they do for our students. I, I think we should appreciate them every day of the year, but this week I hope that they will have a great week and know that they are being thought of. Also, I want to thank our nurses. I won't do it quite as eloquently as Mrs. Cook, but a job that is so essential to our, the wellbeing of our students, I'm glad that we do have nurses in every school. The Teacher of the Year program, again, I do agree with Mrs. Taylor that the best part of those are those films. They are hilarious and, and fun to watch, and, and we see our teachers as the people that they truly are, which are amazing individuals. I had the opportunity of visiting Warhail High School, where I saw Mr. Archibald teaching. I did want you to know, I saw you there. And thanks to the tour of Dr. Carol, that Ms. Dr. Beers and I had, had an opportunity to walk all the halls. That's a lot of, that's a big school, really big. And saw, the same day we saw Jamestown High School, I made my 10,000 steps that day, I want you to know, with Dr. Townsend, and tomorrow we'll be visiting DJ Montague. I had to add a new thing to my bucket list, going to the Greek Isles after seeing Mamma Mia. That was so much fun, and what a great job our students did. And just want to thank all of our drama teachers for the incredibly hard work that they did presenting our, the musicals, and hope that they're getting some rest. So thank you.
Dr. Beers?
I also want to commend and praise our, our teachers in our school division, and as we, as we go through Teacher Appreciation Week. There are countless number of hours, our incredible morning through the night, and often wee hours. I myself personally have spoken to and worked with, and probably taught hundreds of teachers in the school division, and there is no finer group of human beings working with our children in our schools, and I have been to all of the schools. I, so I disagree with the notion that we're not out there and looking about. I was very fortunate to go with Mrs. Young and Dr. Heron. We went down to the International Tattoo, sponsored by the Virginia Arts Festival, the Thursday before. All of our sixth graders, I think it was sixth graders, fifth graders, got that, an incredibly spectacular, very patriotic, wonderful display of young men and women, incredible musicians, dancers. It was, it was a real treat. It really was. I also attended the Teacher of the Year, and I did have to leave early as well, but as, as I heard several of them say, that they really are side-by-side with all the other teachers in their schools as well. So I thought that was, that was wonderful. And the only other thing I have to say is I will be attending the WHRO Direct, Board of Directors meeting next week as the chair of the Hampton Roads Educational Television Association Advisory Committee. And, Madam Chairman, I am done.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have much, too much to add to everybody else. The Teacher of the Year ceremony was wonderful. It's always great to appreciate those, those teachers who were selected as Teacher of the Year. I also liked especially the Rookie Teachers of the Year. That was, I thought that was really a nice touch to kind of encourage those young teachers and let them know that their, their work is recognized and appreciated. Obviously, I'm, I, the Teacher Appreciation Week, I'm fully on board with that, and really appreciate the work that our teachers do, the great work that our teachers do, and, and the amount, the countless, as Dr. Beers said, countless number of hours they put in to, to serve their students, and the love that they have for, for the profession. Next week is New Horizons Signing Day, where the graduating, graduating seniors get to pick which employer they want to go work for in the program that they have there at New Horizons. I'm going to attend, and I'm very excited about that, and seeing those, those students embark on the next part of their life. And as we come to the end of the year, it's been May already, so I don't know where the year went to, that that's where we are, but there are lots of end-of-the-year events and recognitions and, and gatherings, and so I just would encourage everybody to go to as, go to as many of those as possible, because those are all, those are always very fulfilling and very exciting, and very good to see our, our kids' accomplishments and them moving on.
So much fun to be the almost last, the penultimate commentator. Anyway, I, you know, echo everyone's appreciation for teachers. I would like to also add, I really liked the addition of the Rookie Teacher of the Year, and I, I really value the fact that you do use the Teachers of the Year and the Rookies of the Year for their focus groups. I do think that that is a very effective way. You are taking the best of the best and getting their opinions about how to improve things in the school. So I just think that's a, a great idea. I think all of the school board members, probably more than me, go and visit the schools. And I also think we do a very good job of not getting in the weeds, which is not our job. It is not our job to question every single teacher and ask every single teacher how they're doing and what they do. We should be seeing the big picture of things, so reviewing policy. So I just want to say, all of us seem to be in agreement with our roles and the correct, I guess, governance of our role. Thank you. So just wanted to put that out. And then I wanted to say, I am going to be a very important person tomorrow. I'm going to be inducting the Lafayette High School Thesbian Society members. So there, all the rest of you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. You're welcome. That's because you're an alum.
I'm an alum, and I'm a thespian alum.
Thank you so much. So again, ditto, echo, I am the last, so I get to say ditto, echo. And so it is that fun time of year when we're celebrating Teachers of the Year. I did enjoy the Rookie Teacher of the Year, but then also support staff of the year. And so I definitely agree with Ms. Hummel that using those folks as a forum to glean ideas from them, I think is, is phenomenal. I enjoyed Mamma Mia, and I have to go out and get a new CD, because I had played mine so many times in the past that what, I wanted to like get ready for the musical, but mine was scratched, and so I need to get another DVD. Spotify, that's right.
Amazon Music, there's all kinds of options.
I know, so many options are just over my head now. But it is that time of the year for final concerts.
Where are you going to find a record store?
And so I encourage people to attend orchestra and choral and band concerts. And while we recognize our Teachers of the Year, I also feel like we need to give accolades and shout-outs to our PTAs and PTSAs, because they are doing a great job this week of providing breakfasts, breakfasts and snacks, and, and accolades to our teachers, and so we thank them for that. Last week, I had an opportunity to visit DJ Montague with Board Supervisor Member Mr. Hippel, and we were serving, we were working with Pam Dannen and administrators to serve the farm-to-table tastings, which are fun and tasty. And so last year, I had an opportunity to have kale chips. Last week, it was radishes with ranch. And so I know, I think Ms. Cook is going to attend one in a couple weeks. And so those are a great way to showcase Whole Foods for our students and for them to see what they look like. We had like the real radishes with the leaf still on them, attached, and you know, like just freshly pulled out of the ground, and then the chopped-up servings. And so that's a fun way to be in the schools and get a sense of what's happening in our cafeterias. And I was excited to see so many children say, yes, I want to try that. So look forward to those. Those are held monthly in all of our elementary schools and Oakley Middle School as well. So with that, we have upcoming events. So the Policy Committee is meeting on May 8 at 8:00 here in the Annex. Also on May 8, the 21st Century Career Ready Advisory Committee is meeting at 3:30 here in the Annex. Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting on the 9th at 6:30 at the REC Center. The Retirement and Pen Ceremony is May 16 at 5:00 p.m. at Women Mary Matoka Woods Room. The Student Advisory Committee is meeting on May 22 at 3:00 p.m. at Lafayette. And then the, the board is going on our annual retreat, May 31, at the VSB offices in Charlottesville. Upcoming meetings, we'll have a closed session on May 21, 6:00 p.m. at Stryker, followed by the regular meeting at 6:30 in City Council Chambers, and then a closed session on June 4th here in the Annex, followed by a work session at 6:30 here in the Annex. And so agenda items for the next regular meeting, I know we'll be discussing salary schedules and the annual contract renewals, the budget adoption, proposed items. It will also be that we're going to review the Matthew Whaley parking lot and everything that was on the long, the long list of proposed agenda items today, the career tech, and the CDR lease. I think that wraps up everything that's. So with that, unless there are any additions, this meeting is adjourned.